Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
It is 6:30. I would like to call the meeting to order for the Bellis Falls Union High School on 9/27. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have some.
Jason, go ahead.
I'd like to add two adjustments. Uh, one, I'd like to, I'm not sure exactly where to put this, but I'd like to add a vote for the homecoming, this upcoming, uh, homecoming dance on this Saturday, I believe. I'd like to make that an action item. My second one is the HVAC, the buildings and grounds. I'd like to get the process going sooner rather than later with that. So I don't want to delay another month. I'd like to discuss it, make it an action item and move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to put homecoming under new business, be 8A. And HVAC, I think we'll be able to cover that in the principles report and in the building and grounds update. Um, so we'll make sure we cover that under building and grounds update on C1. I'll just make sure I have that in there.
Thank you.
It was on there anyways, so. All right, communication and public comments. Have I got any public, will they speak? Is there any public in your room, John?
Uh, no, I don't see any. Other than our camera, our cameraman.
Point of order, Molly, did you skip the minutes?
Oh, yep, I did. Okay. Let's review and approve board, I told you it was on vacation mode. Review and approve board minutes on July 26.
Some move.
Jack moved them.
Margot seconded.
There you go. Margot second.
I just have a correction.
Yes, Brenda.
I was present. I was, I was cited in a promoting a director's comment, but not in presence.
Yeah, you're at the top.
Okay, so.
Just there.
I'm there.
Any other corrections?
I haven't gotten through them.
Okay, we're gonna roll call. Um, all those in favor of approving the minutes for July 26? Deb?
Aye.
Jack?
As amended, aye.
Ian?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Margot?
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved as amended for July 26.
Madam Chair, there is someone with their hands up, perhaps any public comments? I just thought it'd be worth noting, Maureen Parker.
Thank you. So we're on communication, public comments now, and we got Maureen, please.
Hi, thank you. Um, I am a taxpayer. I'm a teacher and I'm a parent. Um, I had some concerns that had been talking, that were said at the WNESU board, talking about the, um, the mandatory vaccine. So there's a couple of statements that I would like to, um, talk about. Um, a board member asked what happens if a teacher has risky behavior in getting COVID? So I would like clarification of what risky behavior is. Um, another question that I have is, if a teacher catches COVID at school, is that a workman's comp claim? What happens if that teacher catches long haul COVID? If a teacher is really sick, um, with COVID, what is the policy about teaching, um, from home? And if the teacher needs to teach from home, is there any compensation for that teacher's use of internet at home? Because in 2020, when most of us were remote, there was no compensation. Um, October 4th, um, is the mask, when you're gonna decide if it is okay to wear a mask in our schools or not? Um, I have a question that if you're asking everyone to get vaccinated, is it an unsafe workplace, work environment if not everyone in our building is vaccinated, um, according to the CDC? Um, you talk about having the MOU that the teachers presented as taking too long. I just also want to indicate that the teachers are working without a contract again. Um, we worked all last year without a contract until the last, maybe two weeks. So I want the public to be aware of that. Um, and then my third question or concern is, um, because a lot of the teachers were vaccinated early on and the, um, CDC is asking for a booster. If you have a mandatory vaccine mandate, are you gonna require the teachers to get a booster? Um, I appreciate you all serving on the board, but these are questions or concerns that I have as a parent and as a taxpayer and as an educator. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Uh, any other hands up?
I see.
See any? Yep, go ahead.
That's Maureen still.
It's just Maureen.
Maureen's still there.
I will put it back down.
Thank you. All right, so now we're gonna move on to policies, and I would like Priscilla to speak on the McKinney Vento adoption of policy.
Uh, the McKinney Vento is a, a policy that covers homeless and, um, we actually did the first reading at the July 6, 26 meeting. So I'm not sure we have done the second reading, Molly. When did you see a second reading?
So we, we had already approved it for first read, and now we are here to adopt it, so does I, can I have a motion to adopt it?
Two, two readings and then adoption.
Thanks. And haven't we had two readings already or just one?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, there's a motion to adopt the second reading on the, uh, August 23rd minutes.
August 23rd, okay. We don't know, that's what I thought maybe, but I wanted to confirm it. So I would make a motion that we adopt the McKinney Vento policy. It's, we've done the first reading and the second reading and should be ready to adopt it. It serves our homeless population and takes care of them in case we have students that, that need to be covered and so that they're gonna attend school under a different, slightly different program or policy than some of our other students as far as transferring from one school to another.
Hey, can I get someone to second that, please?
We actually don't need a second, Molly. We're under.
I know. My, so my understanding was I thought I had different policy, but if I don't, that's fine. Um, is there any questions on this? Doesn't appear to be none. So let's roll call. Deb, yes or no to adopt McKinney Vento policy?
Yes, aye.
Jack?
Yep.
Ian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Um, Priscilla, do you have a next policy meeting date?
I'm looking at the possibility of October 12th, um, but I haven't confirmed it with my members yet, so that's what I'm looking at as a possibility.
And if it's October 12th, when and where?
What time?
Uh, 5:30.
Where?
Super.
Yeah.
The central office.
Is that too late? You want it earlier, you want five?
No, no.
I, I was looking at 5:30 because I think some of our members have trouble getting there for five.
I do. I can't get there before 5:30.
Uh, FaceTime, like two seconds.
Okay, so we have a tentative date of October 12th at 5:30 central office for the next policy meeting. And so we're gonna move on to principal reports.
Okay, um, I did share my report with all board members, but for the viewing audience, I'd like to go through it if you don't mind, uh, if everyone can bear with me. Um, our fall sports are well underway now and they're doing very well. Um, football is undefeated, field soccer undefeated, girls soccer have won one, lost six, boys are 0-4, but getting better every moment. Uh, cross country has had three meets and we, we've done well in each one of those, uh, with our small team we have running. So the sports are off to a good start. Kids are doing well. Coaches are doing well. Everybody's having a good time, working hard, and success is coming pretty well. Uh, next point number two, NEAS, our New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Uh, collaborative conference visit is coming up in November. Our collaborative conference is the, now with the new standards that New England Association have put out, they are, they do this conference, which is a kind of preview to your decennial visit. So they'll, they'll come out two years before they do the decennial visit and they, they do a kind of mini visit and a mini report, and there's, there's items, uh, around our self-report, around the five standards, and they will tell us how we're doing, they'll make recommendations, and that kind of gives us a, a better guidance for our decennial visit. So when they come in, uh, the fall of 2023 for our decennial accreditation, um, we'll be hopefully in a top-notch place. We're in a pretty good spot right now. Uh, and what I mean by pretty good is, uh, there's a lot of good things going on. Uh, it, the new standards are heavily focused on teaching and learning and student performance. Uh, we're coming off the pandemic and back into, uh, recovery of learning, and students are working well to recover, that I, that I've seen and listened to staff in our building. A lot, lot of extra help, a lot of kids coming in in the morning, staying after school, inquiring in between times, uh, visiting with teachers and getting as much help as they can. That's what I've observed in the school days that we've had so far. Um, that's very, very healthy. Um, when they come, they'll visit our school on November 15th and 16th. Uh, they will interview a lot of, uh, groups, so I'll be on the lookout for a parent group, definitely. Um, part of their visit, it does involve meeting with parents, students, staff, and some members of the board. So again, board members, I'd like a small group of, um, if, if you're available to meet with them when they're here, they'd like to meet with central office staff. So Flor, if you could help us with that and, uh, provide maybe one, maybe yourself and one other or whoever's available for, for me. They just wanna, they wanna talk and, and find everything that's going on with, with us. Uh, they'll meet with the administration, so Andy, if you're available for Sean, you and myself to maybe meet with them.
We'll work on an itinerary.
Yeah, I, I've already started planning it, so, yep. Um, and then we'll, we'll work on any recommendations prior to the decennial visit in the fall of 2023. So that, that's our update on NEAS. Uh, as I say, I feel we're in a very good place. Our self-report is 95% done. Um, hoping by October, uh, we'll finish it off and be able to, uh, have a good read for, for our committee that's coming. Uh, nurses have been busy. Uh, I know there's a lot of nurses, especially the Springfield nurse must be very busy these days. Uh, there's, uh, a lot of, lot of student, lot of COVID cases, lot of student time missed in school. Um, we're continuing in our school to follow the state guidelines, uh, as we deal with each case, identifying contacts and vaccination status. Um, and our, our status is, I've shared it with our, uh, with our board members, but again, it is, it is a moving, moving target all the time because figures, figures will change as people get vaccinated, as we get information about vaccination or not. Um, I, I really don't think it's about personally for the, for our school building, it's not about reaching the 80% threshold, because I don't think that, I, I really don't believe that once you reach the 80%, we should just throw away the mask, uh, because we're still in a very, a very, uh, difficult time for controlling this disease. Um, I, I, I guess I won't totally make that decision, but certainly I feel strongly that it's not about getting to 80%. However, the vaccination status does make a huge difference, and it's, it's not, it's not whether it's not equal or not fair, but by the guidelines or however by the guidelines, if, um, vaccination status is known, it makes a big difference on your time out of school or not out of school. So, um, there, there are documents there, and I'd be happy to talk to any parent that would like to get in touch with me. I, I can speak and, and provide you with as much information as possible. I know we're all learning every day. We watch it every day in school. Mr., um, Murphy and I, we talk every day about this, uh, and that's, that's no lie. Um, homecoming. We have a homecoming dance. Student council have worked hard to set up a homecoming dance. Uh, our dance will be outside and it will be for BFUHS students only, and that, that was a decision that was made internally because that's where it should be made. Uh, it's made from the school. It's not part of policy, it's not part of procedure, it's a dance by students, for students, with a coordinator organizing them. Um, I think they, being only BFUHS, uh, there have been, Mr. Obias let me know, there's been a few students, one or two, maybe three, that were a little bit disappointed at not being able to bring their significant other from another school or town. Um, but I, today, I have not had any parent contact me to let me know that they have a concern about this issue. Um, it, I think the dance is very important for our kids, for their mental health and for their morale. Uh, I can use one example at, um, a, a girl soccer game on Saturday. Uh, the girls were very excited because their Windsor game for homecoming weekend was moved to Friday because they couldn't wait on Saturday to go and get their nails done, their hair done, get their dress ready and get all ready for the evening. That's phenomenal, and they're excited and smiling and happy about it. So that's what I want for our kids. They need that motivation, they need that, um, feel-good moment. So, uh, I, I hope that it'll come off well and it'll, it'll be fun outside. And having done many of these, um, homecoming dances, more than I wanna count, um, one of the, one of the big things for us is kids wanting to go outside when they're inside at the dance. So now we've kind of answered that, we're giving them all outside, so it should be a load of fun, I hope. Um, lunch in the cafeteria. We began, uh, having lunch in the cafeteria on Monday, uh, 9:20, that was last Monday. Um, we, we had our new tables out that hardly managed to, uh, secure for us, our picnic tables in the, in both sides of the cafeteria. Students were very, again, motivated and feeling happy about being able to have lunch in the cafeteria. Um, what Mr. Murphy and I set up, uh, he's our, um, technology guru. Um, we set up a QR code and table number on each table, and when a student sits at that table, all they do is they take their phone or their laptop, which they usually have one or both, and they can scan it or type it in, and then they put the table number. So for any contact tracing, we've got a good idea if anything, if anything goes wrong, anything happens, if anyone comes down ill, we have a fairly good system to get on it pretty quickly. And, uh, from what I've seen in the cafeteria and what I've heard from the kitchen, uh, kids are now beginning to eat even more than they were in the classroom. It started slow, but they're, they're, they're going bananas now, excuse the pun. Um, and it, it's really going well. The kitchen are very, very happy about the way, the way it is right now, so. Uh, buildings and grounds, we met on the 16th. Uh, we did a, a walk-through and it was almost two hours. It was really thorough, and we looked everywhere, pretty much everywhere, and the main focus for now, as, as, uh, Jason said earlier, is to focus on the HVAC. Uh, but we did look at, you know, we went up tennis courts, track, uh, talked about irrigation, uh, we talked about the auditorium seating, we talked about, uh, the driveway and renovations of that, we talked about the face of the building and how we can improve the looks of that. Uh, really did a fairly good root canal on, on everything that we need done, and we have another meeting on Thursday that my hope is that we will get together and start formulating plans on how we're gonna put this all together, uh, and, and how we're gonna finance things appropriately and move forward and make our school the best it can be, not just for the kids, not just the families, but it also looks good too. So, and Molly will follow up a little bit on that in her, uh, policy report or her, sorry, committee report shortly following this. Uh, our arts program, I was asked for a, a quick update. The, the arts have taken a huge hit in COVID, and we have two fantastic people, uh, Mr. Smith and Mr. Pelton, who are working, I think they work 24 hours a day, I don't know how they do it, they're trying to get as many kids back into the arts. Uh, Mr. Smith is doing, working individually with kids on, on vocal, um, as well as his chorus and his class. Um, Mr. Pelton is doing all sorts of individual work coupled with, uh, he's developed a modern band, which is getting a lot more kids back into guitar, keyboards, drums, any type of percussion. Uh, I have watched a few of his lessons and the kids are really motivated and, and getting back into it, which is a good thing to see. Uh, fortunately, the weather's still pretty good, so any individual work, he's also been able to take kids out under the tent at the back, uh, to, to keep it as safe as we can keep it, so. Uh, where are we? Uh, and, and, yeah. And then we have band performances again. I, I'll make sure we get this on our website for any members of the public to see where, uh, we've got our full list of, for the year of band performances, although I think some of the major performances, committees above us have made decisions as to whether or not they're gonna continue this year, um, or whether it's gonna be, um, you know, part of it is remote. Uh, we're not, not totally sure on the whole year yet though, so more to follow on that. And lastly for me, sorry for being long, but, um, October 13th, uh, we have, we had in the past, uh, it's called our college, college and career awareness, and be, prior to COVID, we would take freshmen out on a college visit to let them begin with the end in mind and see what that entails. Uh, we used to go to Castleton and hopefully we're gonna get back into that maybe next year. Um, we would give the PSATs to sophomores and juniors, and we would couple that with a trip up to, uh, the RVTC or down to Brattleboro, uh, to show them what is on offer, uh, career-wise and skill-wise and what they, they still have time that they can participate in. Uh, seniors would normally work on senior projects, they would go on college visits, uh, they would work on their common app, they could come in and spend time with their counselors. Uh, this year, we're, we're trying to work on the same theme, uh, without, or with some of the barriers in place. Our hope is that our seniors, we have, I believe between 20 and 30 seniors are actually taking the SATs. We were able to, uh, through the college board, because we're at the moment, uh, not in a good place to do the public SATs where we have everyone from all over coming to our building, uh, we are able to offer them just to our students in this building, and the 13th is one of those days that I believe 20 to 30 of our seniors are taking advantage of those. Um, and we're also gonna offer a, um, workshop day for senior project, where we're gonna have four or five teachers that will be available to, uh, begin, um, work with, with kids and their senior projects, whether it's on the second part of, uh, phase one, or whether they're actually diving in and beginning writing the paper. Uh, and hopefully that'll help them get a head start, get ahead of it, understand what they're doing and feel more confident to, to get those finished. Uh, and lastly, we thought we'd take advantage of this time rather than chopping up a couple of days, um, to have our freshmen, uh, do their MAPS testing. MAPS testing is a, uh, it's a district-wide initiative where all our kids take the MAPS test and it shows, um, or it records their performance and how well they do, uh, in math, ELA, and we do, we do that three times throughout this year, so this will be the, the first time, uh, second time mid-year, and then at the end, uh, maybe in May at some time, just to measure our kids' progress and see how well they're doing. So we thought it'd be good for them to be able to take, uh, that on that day as well, and we can utilize faculty very well to, to do all these things that we wanna do without disrupting, uh, like a few days as we normally would. We can do a, a one, one day for everybody and get a lot out of it. And then in the afternoon, uh, if we, making that an early release date, in the afternoon, uh, I'd like all our teachers in their groups, their five groups, to work on completing then the ASH reports and having them totally done so that I can then send it off to NEAS and that will give them, uh, the four or five weeks to read through them, giving them plenty of time for our visit. So that's all I have. I know it was a lot, I say all, but it was a lot, so.
Molly, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Josh?
Yes.
Uh, what is the percentage of, uh, teachers vaccinated and the percentage of students vaccinated?
Okay, the percentage that we have right now, working with our nurse and working in the building, on a verbal commitment, we have 96% of our teachers vaccinated. That's not producing the cards, that's on a verbal. And I have sent out a Google form for parents to, uh, respond to simple question, uh, name of child, are they vaccinated, yes, no, or prefer not to answer? And if they are vaccinated, we've asked them to upload their, their card to show us that is the, uh, symbol of proof that you are vaccinated, not saying that we don't believe them. And our, our current percentage of kids at last looking was 20, just under 22%, 22%, 22%. But again, that counts, that takes it the way the state are asking us to do it, total number of kids on cards divided by a population of 312.
Josh, how come there's not a, a similar card standard for teachers and staff?
Uh, good question. Good question.
Okay. Molly, could I enter on that?
Yes.
So, um, David, one of the things we've done since, uh, the Rockingham motion is we put out, um, in a Google form, uh, for, for staff to be able to, uh, put their name and then upload a picture of their, they, which would, which would meet the requirement of notifying administration. Uh, we put that out even though we don't need it until October 8th, and I think, um, when we And I think when we checked, Ricky, we had about 110-ish, just around 110 employees. And that was just put out on Friday.
That's high school employees?
That is overall school employees or SU employees. So what we can do is we can sort that out by building and then we can follow up with administration.
And I think David as well, sorry, just to follow on. I, I do realize that the hardest part is following up all the time, following up with everyone. And some parents might not want to, not want to fill it out at all. I have sent ours out twice and I'm going to continue to beat the drum until we try and get a final number. And I'm okay with doing that because, as I said earlier, I think it's not about reaching the 80%. And this is what is very important for me. It's the amount of time kids will have in school. That's the difference. And it's not differentiation. It's, again, it's all personal choice. But I want kids here. I want them here often. I don't want them out on a 10-day hiatus that they don't need to be out on. But again, I don't get to make that decision, but I'm happy that I'm going to keep assisting. And I can give you an update every day if you need one. Because they do, they go up slowly. But I think, what I have noticed is when I put out the survey again on Friday, we go, we went from 60 to 90. So it has, it's having a little impact. So just keep going. Yes, Jason?
I have a couple of questions. Andy, did you say that we have 110 employees at the high school?
No. So, so thank you. So I can clarify that. So we have 110 staff members across the SU have responded to the request to upload their vaccination card. And I just checked, there's 25 current in that system, 25 of them are high school teachers.
So we have 25 employees?
25 staff members.
Seventy-five. So about 33%.
So you're, about 33% have responded right now, but they're not, they're not under a mandate.
Of that 96% are vaccinated.
So the 96% is a verbal that was asked last year, this year at the beginning. Currently, 25 staff members have uploaded their vaccination card of all the employees that work at the high school.
Okay. So how many employees do we have at the high school?
Seventy-five.
Total? Custodians, all that?
Yeah. Chair, maintenance, everybody.
And we, we asked everyone, right? Parents, custodians?
Yes.
Not just?
My email went out to everybody.
Okay. That's a couple other questions. So I have that document here. So that's 66, we received 66 cards. That's what it says. That's a 924, 21.2%. Mr. Murphy, if you could indulge me, be honest with the math on this. So that means that there's 14 of the 66 responded back saying, yes, my kid is vaccinated or go pound sand, I'm not telling you, correct?
Well, there's 66, I'm looking at the folder right now, there's, of the people that responded, 66 people uploaded cards. So we could have had 100% say yes, but we can't count them unless we have their card. So we have 66 or, or there might be a few more now, cards out of our 312 students.
So we have 312 students. 66 people said that they?
66 people provided cards as proof that they're vaccinated.
What is the nest? What is the percentage of that?
21%.
Sorry, because I was looking at, I read that it's only 66 people responded and that means only 14 came in. That's not accurate?
Right. It was 66. I'm not sure how many people responded, but 66 cards are in our folder of cards.
Okay. So did we?
And as of now, it's 68. So we've gone up to?
Did we get 312 responses?
No. 94. 94 responses so far today.
Okay. So that's a third.
But we're not stopping. We're going to keep going.
So what is, yeah, what is the plan to get more responses and what is that, what is the marketing strategy to encourage families to send it in? Because there's obviously reason that they're not, they're just like, I'm not telling you. I mean, that's my belief, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Maybe.
Maybe. I mean, what is, what is the marketing strategy behind getting more other than please send it in?
No, certainly.
Can I add to that? Are you using that, the new incentive from the state of the bonuses and money that's going to come and just, and for students to help with programs and stuff if they turn in vaccination cards and such percentages?
That's a good point. No, no, that was purely, purely an email sent out by me with a letter asking for this information. So.
So other than that, is there any other strategy? Do we have signs posted? You know, anything that says, you know, hey, this is our goal, you know, anything? I mean, is there a strategy at all? I'm just wondering.
No, not at the moment, other than what we, what we started with. And I'm open to, as I say, I'm open to, I, I want, I'd like to know everyone's status if we can.
I think it's going to be awfully tough because the vaccine's been out for a while now. So people are either going to get it or not get it, and that's where they're at. So it's going to be hard to sway them, you know, whatever your personal feelings are. So 312 students, 66 have responded. 94, sorry.
68, 68 have now uploaded their cards.
Okay. And you guys are going to work on a strategy to?
Yes.
To move that along?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll keep that tally going so you can check it.
I just have one last question. If you get to 100%, every student is vaccinated, will you then feel comfortable of taking the mask off?
Me personally or for the school?
I think we have to wait and see where we're at. I think, you know, that's a question that we can ask.
A question for the nurses for me. If the nurse would be comfortable with that, they're certified medical.
Is Whitney online?
Well, it all.
Yeah, right there.
John, it also depends on, on where we're at with COVID at that time too. I mean, there's some actors.
I would feel very good if we were 100% because then I would know that if there were any, anything going on, that kids would not lose any time out of school.
It's a very hard job and I don't envy it. Mr. Hosh, you signed up for it. So I just want to ask about?
Jack, you're up.
Hi, thank you. Sorry. I, I don't, you know, I don't want to interrupt this interrogatory, but I, I did have a question for, for Mr. Broadway. You, John, you said that no parents had come to you about this. Is it, it's not, it's not the problem this time. It's homecoming? Am I right on that?
Yeah.
I had a couple, just to let you know. And I never get this stuff because everybody knows this is not an area I care much, you know, normally care that much about. But I did hear fairly impassioned from a couple of kids and from a parent or two. I, I would wonder, and I'm not going to tell you to change your policy here, but it seems to me that this would be a great opportunity to encourage, people have dates from outside the school, to encourage them to bring dates that are vaccinated. I mean, kill two birds with one stone, where we're encouraging vaccination and we're, we're allowing kids to bring folks from outside the school. Because actually, a lot of the schools around here are reporting vaccination rates a whole lot higher than 20-odd percent. And if anything, I think it would be a means to encourage people to get vaccinated and increase the health and safety of our kids rather than put them at risk. Like I said, normally don't care, but I got some teenagers who work locally who care a whole lot and made sure I knew about it. So just passing that on.
Thank you.
Molly?
Yes, Priscilla?
Okay. I have just a couple of things. What is it, what do you do for a rain date? Or are you just covered with a tin?
It'll be canceled. It'll be canceled. We won't have that. Because we, apart from the deposit for the disjockey, everything else is, we own everything else. So it's not going to, it's not going to be a big impact. Kids are going to pay, in fact, that was one of the questions today that I put over announcements because kids have been asking. Kids will be paying as they come because we don't want to get involved in refunds and whatever in case it is canceled. Although the forecast is pretty good.
I like Jack's suggestion about, you know, if they're bringing a vaccinated date, it might be something that you could consider, but you know. Also, I have a friend who has a huge amount of materials, quilting materials and some frames. And if you would like those, just please let me know. I told her I would ask. They are selling her home and moving. So she's got a huge leftover from when her mother had them. There's a, I think she still has the circular frame and a couple other frames. So they, if she'll get back to me right away, so I can let her know immediately.
I'll talk to Ms. Holmes.
I also have a bunch of music tapes. If the music department is interested from another friend who was going to actually just dispose of them. So it's another area. Thank you. That was it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Broadway, any other updates?
Uh, not right now.
You were going to speak on the HVAC. We have it on the building grounds update, but I do think that maybe it sounds, you know, it'd be good if you, you know, mentioned to everyone what you wanted. You spoke to me today about, you know, how to get going on that. So why don't you?
What, what I'd like to have us propose is me to work to get the spec bids going so that we can get the, all the stuff we need to do based on the MNE report and our engineer and get the heads together, get a good bid spec so we can get it ready to go out. Because that will take a little bit of time. I'm still hopeful that we'll get some extra money to complete our project on HVAC and be a very healthy school in HVAC land. So that, that's what I would like to ask is if the board could certainly give me a motion to, to start working on getting the bids specs for the HVAC. As well as that, I would love getting bids for the driveway and the auditorium seating. That might be a bit greedy, but I'm going to ask anyway. So, thank you. Is that, is that what, or Molly?
I would like to at least have a motion to approve HVAC. And we all know how Molly feels about the driveway, but let's try to get this HVAC thing taken care of.
Molly, I would make a motion that we looked into getting HVAC bids, including the, the air conditioning.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah. We have an open new business item and I'm thinking that one of the things that isn't on it is sort of just generalized budget discussion, similar to what we just had at the, at the elementary schools. And I'm wondering if, you know, people can put, put together a list, if we could spend five minutes on that blank item, just sort of identifying things that people believe are really important to them with budgetary implications. So we can start to put a footprint down in terms of what we care about and what we don't. We'll try to keep it like a 10, 15-minute tops.
Okay. But we're, we're trying to get a, a motion as for the HVAC system right now.
No, no, I hear you. I just, it just, I, I think in, in isolation, it feels a little, you know, I support, I support the idea. I just think that we ought to focus more broadly. That's all. I'll, I'll defer to you on this.
So I, I believe that by getting involved in the Building and Grounds Committee that we have some, some real issues with our HVAC system. I'm, I'm not going to lie. I didn't realize what was really going on until I spent a few minutes with David Clark and he has studied it well. And we've got some things that need to get fixed. And it's not a, it's not a real fun topic because we've spent a lot of money on it. But I do believe that at this point, our next step is to get a bid, get the bids specs, have somebody help us with that and try to find out what it's going to cost to get this school where it needs to be. Am I, am I misled on that, David Clark?
Molly, I completely agree with you. And I think Priscilla put a motion on the floor, which was essentially to direct John to get bid specs assembled.
So, okay. So I haven't missed anything. We have a motion on the floor to allow Mr. Broadway to start getting big bid specs, including the air conditioning units for the high school. Is there any discussion? I see none. Deb, yea or nay?
It's only for bids, so it still comes back to us at some point. So I'll say yea.
That's right. Jack?
Yea.
Ian?
Oh, yes.
David?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jason?
Absolutely.
Margot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, John, you got it.
Thank you.
I think that if you can, you know, take a little time and, you know, use all your resources, because let's not have to do this again in two more years.
No.
So, Mr. Broadway, are you all set? Principals report, we've covered everything you want to cover?
That's great. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Business office. Mr. Hawes, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't at this time.
Is your report going to be, is it online like your predecessor was?
I did not know he did that. I will make that online and, yes, we can, we can make that.
Because, because if you, if you, if you have your report at the WNA issue meeting and then it's online, so anyone else can read it that doesn't log on, I don't think you have to repeat it at every school board meeting. Unless another board member disagrees with that.
Molly, I'd like to have it open now for questions, you know, on it, maybe at the other, at the regular board meetings, so that it could be on there just for opening up questions if we're not getting a full report, which I understand sometimes it's long.
Okay. Yeah, we'll always ask him. We'll always have him here. But that's good. Committees, Building and Grounds update. So John covered that fairly well already. We got together, we walked most of the grounds and then the buildings, found some nooks and crannies that probably some people didn't know we had. There's a lot to do. If we were, you know, to win a lot of money, then probably we would really, you know, have an opportunity to really do some things. We are meeting again this Thursday. We had a, a report given to us. This, it was huge. And I asked to be able to digest it a little bit before we had our next meeting. So we bumped it to two weeks. Most of that is on the HVAC system. I'm sure there'll be some more questions Thursday. And I think right now that's what we are trying to really focus on is getting that taken care of. There's a lot of things that, you know, as we walk through, everybody has a, has a different approach to how they'd like to do things. But, you know, I'm a believer of just because you're not on the Building and Grounds Committee, if there's something that you, you know, you drive through that school and you see something every time, you think, why haven't we done that? Then bring it to our attention. Because everybody looks at things differently and has different priorities. And, you know, really, it's, it's all of us. So even though, you know, we're not all in the Building and Grounds Committee meeting, it all comes to you guys for us to do anything. But if there's something, you know, aching at you, please don't hesitate to contact any of us, myself, Jason, Margot. I'm missing my other one. Um I'm missing my other one. David Clark was there. He certainly could approach him. He's I think he's there for trying to help us with the HVAC. But send me an email if you got something you're looking for. Anybody have any questions? I see none. So we are going to move to unfinished business for discussion, discussion of COVID safety protocols. Nurse, I hope we we have a nurse here, and we're gonna talk about mask mandate after ten days. Um Whitney, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, would you like to speak to this?
Well, um I can speak to a couple of different things. Uh first of all, I was just sitting here crunching some numbers, waiting for everything to kind of start up, and right now, if my numbers are correct, I am looking at at least a hundred and fifty student days missed um due to COVID right now. And that is, that includes uh I'm trying to, hold on, I'm looking at two different screens here. I've got
Whitney, is that for this year?
That that's just for the last three weeks, yeah. Up to and including today. That includes at least forty-seven um individual cases of students and faculty and staff. And granted, some of those are vaccinated. Um majority of them are not. Um obviously, the 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 majority of missed days are by unvaccinated folks. And that that's crazy to me. We've been in school for, you know, there's what fifteen, sixteen school days on the calendar, and we've got a hundred and fifty missed student days just at the high school alone. Um what I am struggling with right now, um I mean, there's a there's a bunch of things that I'm struggling with right now. Um the the students have been great as well. Is it somebody's birthday? What's going on? I don't know. Oh, well, oh, good job, girls. Yes, I heard they won like at the very end. Nice work. Um what I'm struggling with right now with them with um the whole COVID situation, with the masking with the students. Ninety-nine percent of the time, the students are fine with the masking. They are used to the rules. They follow the rules. They are compliant. You know, you see them once in a while with it hanging off their ear down under their nose and something. You give them a quick reminder. They are fine to put it back up, and they don't give you a whole lot of lip, you know, in regards to, you know, the rule. Um where we are struggling, I think, um is not so much just the masking, but um people basically just using common sense, and I and I hate to say this, but that's it's it's really where we're struggling right now. Um and in school is not necessarily the problem. It's the it's the it's the variables that we don't have any control over, and it's outside of school. And um and and not school-sponsored activities. It's, you know, people going to visit friends or people visiting families. And I I mean, there have been, I mean, we were talking about risky behaviors earlier, and there's, you know, we're struggling with some of the stories we're hearing through the office. And what I don't think the public understands, and at this point, you know, my husband made a great point that I think and I think he's right, I think the public is just so sick of dealing with this as much as we are, is that everybody's um basically level of caring about, you know, public safety and following the rules is just that everybody's frustrated, they're tired. They're sick of following the rules, and we get it. But I don't think people really understand the level of impact that that has on our school communities. And, you know, as far as masking goes, you know, we were talking about, you know, trying to reach a hundred percent of, you know, vaccination rate to take off these masks. I good, bad, or in between, do the masks help? Probably, you know, you read it, you read seventeen different articles, and they'll tell you seventeen different things. And let's face it, if you search hard enough, you can find the answer that you are looking for uh online. Um as far as the, you know, benefit of the masks, but, you know, where I I really don't want people to take these masks off because I think we're having a hard enough time corralling folks and getting them to follow the rules as it is. Um whether it's, you know, in school or out of school, you know, distancing, not distancing, and, you know, even just coming to school sick. I mean, God, I send at least a couple of people home a day that just come to school not feeling well before they even leave the house. And, you know, I feel like, A, you know, we're never gonna reach that hundred percent. People have different, you know, thoughts, views, beliefs, whatever. Um health reasons that they can't get it, fine. Do what you do. You you do you. You know, stay at stay in your lane. Do you do what you gotta do for you. But I think if we, even if we reach that, you know, magic number and take off these masks, we are just opening up the floodgates. I am I am struggling to keep my head above water right now. Um I'm and my concern as a nurse taking care of your kids, these are your children that we are taking care of. We're gonna miss something, and something bad's gonna happen because we've got our heads so far buried in the sand dealing with this garbage. Um something bad's gonna happen, and and it frightens me. And I don't understand why we are still having this conversation when we really should just be, you know, these are our kids we're talking about, guys. Like, I can't understand why we don't want to do anything and everything we can to keep everyone in our buildings as safe as we possibly can. I I I'm really just struggling with this. I mean, it's, I I don't know, I mean, I I I I'm struggling with it. So as far as my opinion goes, I don't care what number we get to. I want to keep the masks. I want to continue following the the protocols that we're following. Um because I really think, you know, I I look at Springfield. We are we are dangerously headed to a place that we don't want to go, and, I mean, I love my children, but, you know, thinking of another six months on Zoom at home and trying to do my job from home is I'm struggling with even just the thought of and I know, you know, everybody's busting their butts to do the best they can with with where we are right now, and it's I'm 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 nervous. I'm very nervous. And I and I'm I'm feeling like a lot of the si- the decisions to reach this eighty percent to take off the masks is based on adults and their comfort wearing their masks and their, you know, the point of which they've reached of frustration and of following the rules and wearing the masks, and it's not based on the well-being and the best interest of our students. And that's just my two cents, and um I I really, I really think we'd go in a bad direction if we we asked them to remove these and if even if we've reached that quote magic number.
Whitney, I I'd like to ask you a question, um and maybe you don't know this answer, but um being in the position you are in, I've heard a lot of rumors about Springfield, and they're very, very close to us. Um what what is going on in Springfield? I think I'd just like to let the board hear that.
Uh Springfield has has closed temporarily. Um their numbers have gotten so high that yeah, they have closed. It's a temporary closing. Um correct me if I'm wrong, I think um at least Desiree is on here. Um but uh I I believe it's a temporary closing until everybody can get tested, test out, you know, their time, kind of similar to what they did in Grafton. Um but, I mean, th- these numbers are skyrocketing.
So are you talking about the high school? In Springfield?
Springfield, yep.
Uh Molly?
Yes.
If I could just interject, so because I got an email from uh Zach, the superintendent up there. So they are closed today. Um and it's kind of a reset day. Uh they have uh an enormous amount of students out of their middle school, I believe a quarter of the other students was out, and then their numbers just keep going up. So uh they are using this day to kind of like plan and and do those kind of things.
So what happens to our kids that are going to the tech?
The tech is closed today, too.
And are those kids having to be tested? Does every kid have to be tested?
No, they're not. It's not, they're not closed for kids to get tested. They're just closed so that they can figure out how they can address some of the increasing numbers uh within their community.
If we had known about a close contact in one of the tech programs, they're they're actually really good about calling us pretty quickly. So as far as I am aware, we have not had any close contacts in the uh tech programs.
They have twenty, but they have twenty-five percent of their entire student body out on quarantine right now.
Um I would, I'm gonna, Jack, I see your hand. I just want to thank Whitney for participating. Jack, go ahead.
Yeah, this is just a question for Whitney. Um what is your understanding of both the CDC's guidance on on uh schools and masking?
On schools, I meant, well
Yeah, I mean, what what is what is the best practice at this point? What what is what are what are the professionals, you know, recommending? I know that the state uh went with this eighty percent vaccinated thing over the objection of their medical staff. What is the CDC saying um about this? Well, what are they looking, are they just still a hundred percent, let's not, let's mask until further notice, or is there are that they have some sort of threshold, too?
There's there's a definitely some some, you know, um varying opinions.
Yeah, but they had an official opinion, they had an official posting on this. I just didn't know if you were uh which I the last I saw was still that they were recommending mask.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Uh and 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 the reason I'm bringing this up is, you know, one of the things that I worry about is that, you know, we we have a lot of power as boards, but we're not experts. We're we have power, but part of that power requires some requirement upon us to listen to experts. And the experts are saying that they're that ten days is not a thing. The experts are saying eighty percent isn't really a thing. They're saying masking reduces infection by between forty and sixty percent, depending on whose study you're at. And I I just wanna, I want us as boards to be humble in terms of what we know. And when we don't know something, uh use the advice of experts to help us make decisions.
I see Ian's hand up.
Thanks, uh Molly. Um Whitney, uh I have a question about how much time you're spending uh doing contact tracing. Um I'm wondering, basically, uh seems like if you've got a hundred and fifty lost school days, that must mean you're making a whole lot of phone calls, and I'm curious about how you're able to get all that done with all the rest of your duties in a given day.
Um thank you, uh Ian, for bringing that up because um that's the nurses we meet fairly frequently. That's one of the big things that we talk about. Um each one of us, I think, I mean, there's there's seven of us. And we have, each one of us has spent at least one night, if not more, um at work until at least nine o'clock or later trying to do these contact tracings. Um we use an app um just to kind of keep track of our time that we are not in the building. I mean, we're contracted until, I think, three twenty in in the building a day through Friday. Um I am currently in the last just week, I will bring this up right now on my thing, I'm up to forty-six hours outside of school hour time, um working on tracing notes, contacting people, providers. Um contacting people about test results. Um I did a home food delivery for a parent that couldn't leave because she had four small kids at home. Um we are spending endless hours doing this, um you know, and what, a- again, it's we do it because we have to do it morally, ethically, professionally, we have to do this. I mean, these are thi- this is not paper we're pushing. These are people. I cannot morally and ethically come home, go to bed, knowing that there were twenty-six people that I didn't call that were potentially close contacts to a kid that are then bringing something potentially home to their families where there might be somebody immunocompromised at home. That is not right. But also not okay that our weekend, we we have no weekends anymore. Been home this afternoon. I spent about an hour with my kids. Um I whipped them up something quick for dinner, and I've, you know, been on here, you know, on on Zoom with you go with you guys, but I was also, you know, crunching numbers before I got on. And I've got, you know, paperwork to go through long into the night after this. Um our daily duties, like I said, it scares me um that things are going to get missed because we are so deep into this. Um I mean, I don't want to speak for all the other nurses, but, you know, I'm 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 I don't want to say I'm struggling, but it's to get the things that I need to do on a daily basis, it it they are they're being very overshadowed by by COVID. You know, I think of, you know, the folks that are down in the elementary school levels. They've got a couple of brand-new, you know, um fragile diabetics. And those kids need finger sticks at least four or five times a day, maybe six times a day. You add in heat, dehydration, gym, stress, and then somebody slipping them a snack that they're not supposed to have. Those nurses are in those are are basically, you know, part-time to those kids all day long. Add on top of that our regular visits. I mean, I probably get anywhere between seventeen to to twenty-five, thirty visits a day in and out of the office. Um and then, you know, on top of the phone calls that that we need to make for contact tracing. And I mean, I'm fortunate enough at the high school level to have, you know, a number of students that are vaccinated, which does reduce the amount of legwork that's in that's involved. But beyond me, you know, at the middle school level and the elementary school, I mean, it's astronomical the amount of time that that folks need to put in. It it's insane. And we are fighting an uphill battle, and we are fighting a fight that we certainly are not winning right now. Um and like I said, I I'm just, I'm I'm terrified that something very bad is going to happen because we are we don't have the time, and I and I say, you know, yeah, there is there enough time, though? No. I mean, if you added eight hours on a day, you probably still wouldn't get it done. Um we're doing the best we can. Um most of the parents, you know, I tonight I made a phone call right before I got on here um to a parent, and she's very understanding, you know, I'm sorry I didn't get to you earlier, but, you know, life happens. She's very understanding. But we've had another one of our nurses basically get threatened by a parent, you know, um pretty verbally aggressive, being like, I can't believe it took you X number of hours to get in touch with me about my kid possibly being a close contact. And, you know, again, because we're dealing, this is not paper, we're dealing with people. But at the same time, I'm one person. I can only make so many phone calls so quickly, and unfortunately, somebody's got to be at the bottom of the list. And there's nothing we can do about it. Um we do the best we can with contacting, you know, families uh via email and robo-calls when there's a when there's a potential case. Luckily, knock on wood, we haven't had, you know, too many at the high school level, but, I mean, there's you know, there's not enough manpower, and, you know, luckily, like I said, mo- most most of the families that we're dealing with are very understanding, and they're right on top of it, and they get it. But it stinks when you go home busting your butt so hard and you feel so defeated because you cannot get ahead and you cannot win.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Whitney?
I do.
Molly?
Yes, Priscilla.
Um yeah, uh my heart goes out to the nurses. They they have been fantastic in all school areas. I know um all the way up through in the in the Littlewoods, working till nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night sometimes. So we just need to be really patient with them. I was wondering the um whether a motion such as the board follow, the school and board following the state suggested guidelines for masking. Um what we did, I'm gonna put, if Rockingham did through October fourth, or until changed by the board, that way it just goes on because the the um guidelines are supposed to be looked at again. They're gonna come out with some new ones on the fourth. So um if we had to look at them, we could. But if you put or until changed by the board, then they can be ongoing. And that way, they don't just stop at some point until we do without having to call a meeting immediately to have them go back in, or that we can just go to them. So would you be comfortable with that motion, Whitney? If so, I'll make that motion.
I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, then I would make that motion, Molly. Okay, then I would make that motion, Molly.
Oh, you have just made a motion that we are going to be, you're gonna change until we change it as board members.
Right, that we follow the state guidelines for masking until changed by the board.
We're gonna follow state guidelines in masking and, and, until changed by the board.
Right. That way if all of a sudden the COVID disappears next week, we can come back and we can do something, but.
Thinking. Is there any questions? Any discussion? John, are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that, that's very, very reasonable.
Molly, this may be moot now that we have this motion on the table, but I just wanted to ask Whitney, like, you know, there were certainly a lot of different issues that were very important that she brought up in her presentation, discussion. And just wondering from her, like, if she has any suggestions on actions or items that would be helpful, either with, I mean, there's masking that's on the table, which is important, but there's also this other issue of nurses being completely overwhelmed and working way over what they should be. Just wondering what other actions might be recommended.
Whitney, do you have something? There you go. Thank you. You know, and we go, we go into this profession, like, doing it because we like taking care of people and that's.
Whitney, we lost you.
Am I there?
Yeah, we got you. You went in this profession to help people and then we lost you.
Sorry. So that's why we don't go home until we make sure we make contact with all these families, you know. I, I, I can't, I can't sleep until I know that, you know, these families know what the plan is. I'm, but I mean, at some point, you know, I'm, I'm a person too, you know, I'm, I am a nurse, but I, you know, I have, believe it or not, I have a little bit of a life out, outside of here, you know, I've got young kids. And I'm not going to sacrifice, you know, their sports and their athletics and missing school events and stuff for them. And, and as I said, you know, people in the community have been pretty, pretty good about that. But, you know, at some point, you know, what are our expectations? You know, I've got folks, you know, emailing us, you know, emailing me at least personally at, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, wondering what they should do, you know, as either parents or staff members, you know, as far as coming into school. And then maybe, you know, in the middle of trying to get my kids ready and myself ready and trying to get on the way to work on time, I don't see it until I'm at school, you know, and I'm sorry, you know, like, I'm human, you know. Same goes for people, you know, emailing us in the middle of the night about, you know, well, do we get tested? You know, my son was exposed this evening, blah, 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 what's the plan? You know, one of, and we do the best we can to keep up with it. And I'm trying to be better about, you know, putting an auto reply on at night that I will get back to people in the morning and shutting my phone off at night because it gets overwhelming and it's not fair to my family either. One of the suggestions that somebody had talked about was possibly looking into the idea of a call center for after-hours available for the entire SU. So if families, staff have questions, you know, between 4:00 PM and 8:00 AM, they can call and at least leave a message or talk to somebody that's familiar with the guidelines and familiar with the plans, you know, and at least get a good plan in place so that they don't feel like they're left hanging until somebody gets to work. Because I've been that parent, you know, with, with an infant or a young child that doesn't know what to do. God, my kids are eight and 10 and I'm still that parent sometimes that I don't know what to do, you know, it's, we're, we've all been there. But at some point, you know, my, my level of, oh my gosh, here we go again. It just continues to rise when I open up my, you know, phone and it just happens to be on my email and I've got seven emails and I've left my phone down for an hour. And, you know, it's nine, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night and I'm just trying to relax and go to bed. So I think, you know, that might be something to even, you know, just maybe entertain. Because this, the pace that the nurses are at right now is, is not sustainable. It is absolutely not sustainable. And again, we do not go into this for the money, but I gotta tell you, it's, you know, it, we're, it's, it's getting to the point where it's so disruptive for our home lives and our family lives that we've, we've got to start thinking if, what our expectations are. And if our expectations are to be working to the extent that we're working at the pace we're working, we gotta, we gotta talk about compensation for this because it's, it's getting to that point. You know, some of the other strategies that we were talking about, you know, I've, I've considered, you know, doing, you know, weekly pieces, just kind of putting myself out there to the community to remind them, hey, you know, guidelines and mandates, you know, from the state, at least mandates. Mandate is, is a fancy word for almost like a law, like, so when you are mandated to isolate and mandated to quarantine, you should probably do it because we're finding a lot of folks in the community that are not doing that. And it's, it's making contact tracing very difficult to nearly impossible in some cases. And again, on that note, that, that we get it, parents and families are sick of, of masking and following the rules. But at the same time, you know, if I send your kid home sick and I drive home with the, you know, and I send them home with the instructions to go home and isolate and quarantine until you can, you know, get test results back. And then I see you hanging out at Athens with five other people outside, no masks. What am I doing? This is insanity here, guys. You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, trying to get a different result. This is, I, I am the mayor of crazy town right now. This is, it's, it's not going well. And, you know, so, you know, and my husband made a good point that, you know, we can remind people, you know, from now until next week that, you know, these are the rules, these are the guidelines, this is what we recommend. People don't care. They're not listening. They're gonna do what they want to do anyway. But we have to continue doing what we're trying to do with, with the masking and, and, you know, the distancing and things like that in the schools, just to try to keep us safe. But as far as, you know, other strategies, I am, I am open. I am wide open for whatever you think may help.
Thank you. Jack, I see you, but Jason has had his hand up, so Jason.
Madam Chair, can we call a question?
Question's been called.
Yes.
That was what I was gonna do. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to follow state guidelines and masking until changed by the board. We'll take a roll call.
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Ian?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're going to follow state guidelines and masking until changed by the board. 7B, fiscal support of multi-district waiting committee. Who's got that?
Well, Molly, you had asked me to get some answers back on whether there is a, you know, positive, I guess, recommendation to support the committee. I have queried the state numerous times. I've been on many phone calls with them and whatnot. I've talked to other superintendents. And this waiting study continues to sit in limbo right now. It's my understanding that some of, if not all, the work that happened to get it pushed into that kind of limbo was the, the waiting, the lobbying that was done. But I, I'm, I'm not intimate with, with the lobby group. I know David is. But it would seem that if it is working in a positive direction to kind of help us because a, as I've reported, we are talking, we are this year under a broad, a block grant. We're not getting the reimbursement grant. The state still has not even told us what the change will be. So I can't even tell you what the difference will be this year. But anything, you know, I think that can be done to continue to support our students and with grant money would be effective.
So my question on that was, I, you know, we kept getting asked for money, but nobody could tell me how this was really going to affect us. I heard some really enormous numbers and then I heard some, oh, it's not going to be that bad really. So that is why I asked for you to give me some sense because you were that guy when I asked you that. You weren't our superintendent, but I still think probably you're the one to give me those answers. Yeah, and I don't know, maybe you don't have the answers, but I was really hoping for some, you know, some money figures, you know. I mean, I kept hearing that it was gonna be over a million dollars next year if we didn't, if we didn't continue to support this lobbying. And, and I'm not, I don't know if I'm for it or against it because I don't know enough about it. You know, all I hear is that we're lobbying. So that's, I don't know, maybe we don't have those answers, but that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, no, and, and I do apologize for that when I, you know, as, as recent as just last week, was asking, the AOE was asking Stacey Alexander if they had heard anything. I think I even queried Flora. And we have, we've been constantly told, we'll get back to you as to what the impact is going to be on us, which is, it's unfortunate, but I think it's, speaks to where, you know, the, the state is still trying to figure this out. Again, when the calculator was available, depending on what numbers you, you put in, you know, you got these, you could get these wide ranges. And every time I kind of put it in and tried to use conservative numbers, I was coming in, in the million dollar range for the entire SU. And that, that's less grant money being, so we, we used to get a reimbursement grant, so it'd be a million less. And it could be anywhere from like 800 to 900,000, but that, I'm using a million as a round number.
Okay. Jack, you had your hand up?
You're muted, Jack.
Question's been answered for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's no action really to be taken on that. I was just looking for, I want to stay up to speed on that. So, you know, anytime there's an update, I think that we need to be there.
As soon as I hear, I will let the board know.
Thank you. All right, we are on 8A, new business for discussion. Jason Terry has asked, yes, ma'am?
Molly, before we go on to that, I think Jason had a question for Whitney.
I'm good, Molly.
Are you okay?
Good, moving on.
All right.
Next play.
Sorry, go ahead.
8A is discussion on homecoming and whether we should ask the schools to let kids from other schools go to homecoming. I gotta tell you, this isn't a board thing, but it's here and Jason asked for it and I'm trying to let everybody have their time. Jason, speak please.
Thanks, Molly. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that I'd like kids to be able to bring a boyfriend or girlfriend from other local schools in our local area. Mr. Brody, can I like to speak at that motion if I could?
Go ahead, you got the floor.
All right, so Mr. Brody had mentioned that there's just a handful of kids. And, you know, the one thing that we don't, haven't talked about is the social or emotional piece that COVID is hurting kids, especially homecoming is outside. And you, any day of the week or any weekend, you could go up to the football field, soccer field, field hockey, you name it. And there's kids, you know, running around without masks on and everything's great. And, and you should see the smiles on their faces and it's like the world is back to normal. But then, you know, then, then to throw this at them with, yeah, so it just doesn't make sense to the kids where, you know, we're saying no mask on outside, mask on in schools, but now homecoming is outside and we can't have a few, a handful of kids bring their, bring their dates. So, and they did the same thing at prom as well. So they had prom this past year for only Bellas Falls kids. So, believe it or not, New Hampshire's only four miles away and some kids date other kids from New Hampshire or other local area schools. So I'd like the, the board to somehow help with that.
I would like to offer an amendment, Molly.
Go ahead.
My amendment is that, in addition to Jason's motion, if it stipulate that any non-Bellas Falls attendee produce physical proof of vaccination, the card.
Jason, do you accept his friendly amendment?
My only thing with that is, we're not, if, if you go to a Friday night football game, we're not asking kids from other local schools to produce a card. So, you know, what's, what's the difference?
Can I respond to Mr. Terry's query, Molly?
Sure.
I'm asking the chair, of course, and I would simply point out that my esteemed colleague from Rockingham, that those kids at the football game probably aren't dancing with each other. He's got me, check me.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor that's been amended, which says any non-Bellas Falls student, repeat it for me, Jason. How do you want this worded?
I'd like kids to be able to bring boyfriend or girlfriend from other local schools in our local area. And then whatever David's.
Physical proof of vaccination.
Yeah.
There's a motion on the table for kids to be able to bring local kids to homecoming as long as they can produce a vaccination card. When is homecoming? It's Saturday. So that ought to happen by Wednesday. Can I put that in there, David? Can I amend your amendment?
I would like to respond to you in, in an indefinite fashion, Molly. I think in much the same vein that we're not collecting the admission fee until individuals show up for the event. Perhaps they could have their vaccination card in one hand and their money in the other. But I, I would not put it if that smoothes the waters.
All right, I'll, I'll drop it, but I, I was up here, one, Brad, you bid your hand up.
Oh, me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Deb, Brady, you there? Yep.
Yeah, I just like to move the question. That's what I like to do.
Yeah, I just like to move the question. That's what I like to do.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Brody first.
Yeah, I, I just like to chime in on this. First of all, no disrespect, but a school dance should not be a board decision from what I factor and what I've seen in the past. You know, we, we follow a lot of, we follow a lot of policies. Whenever there's any issues in school, we always look at policies. Having a dance is not one of them. We also rely on volunteers of faculty to chaperone such a dance. And I'll tell you now, if this motion gets passed, there will be no dance because we want people to run it. So, but again, I, I realize there's one or two. And to those one or two, this is really passionate to get their partner at this dance. But I, you know, I, like I say, I, I don't get control of it. I control it from the school point and I'll certainly be there to help out. But I, I know for a fact from the staff that they're concerned. And we've had a talk about having the dance and we've got chaperones based on BFUHS students. All the students up at a football game, I, I don't see any of the, if it's a football game, away fans are certainly not dancing with our kids. All our kids are dancing together or playing together. They're all in the same cohort. They all go to school. They're all in town here. So there's a lot of differences. But we are considering the social well-being of our kids. And certainly, I, that's all I can say. I mean, I, we can't have a dance if we don't have people to run it. So. And again, it's not being, I'm not objecting to other opinions. I'm not taking my own opinions. I'm taking all the factors into consideration. And as I say, a dance should not be, from what I, what I read, unless I'm wrong, it's not governed by board policy. It shouldn't be somewhere voted.
This is not a board issue.
I know that.
This is not a board issue.
Molly, can I respond to Mr. Brody?
Point of order, I asked to move the question.
But we still are having discussion.
Here we go.
We have to have, we can't move it until we vote.
But this is ridiculous, so.
May I respond to Mr. Brody?
So Deb has asked to move the question. I'd like to call that from everyone first because I do think that we haven't had enough time. And there's people that got things to say. So do, do we still, do we want to challenge Deb to move the question or?
I would like to challenge it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Molly, I just want to say that I don't,
Go ahead, Jack.
I don't, this is, this belongs to the purview of the school. We are overstepping. I want to move the question because I'd like it to die. Thank you.
Molly, I'd vote no also.
I don't disagree with Deb.
I want to, I want to hear what's being said. I'm voting against moving the question.
Jack, what do you got?
Okay, couple of things. One, I think that with all due respect to Mr. Brody, I think that policies that involve encouraging people to get vaccinated probably does fall within our purview. But I too have this evening gotten emails, shall we say, from people who are right now laid out to be, laid out to be chaperones. And have made it very clear to me in their communication that they're not planning on chaperoning anything that extends beyond the, beyond our immediate school community because they don't know those folks. And I think that Mr. Brody's objection, as much as I would really like to use this as an occasion to encourage people to show their vaccination cards and get vaccinated, that's a real, that's a real concern for me. And I'm sort of inclined to support Mr. Brody on this reluctantly because, A, I do think it, John, I do think it is a, anything we can do to encourage vaccination is something we should try to do. I'd be actually in favor of only letting vaccinated kids attend the, the homecoming dance. But we, we have volunteers. And if they're not willing to volunteer, unless the board is willing to show up en masse to do it themselves, which we've done once or twice, I think that the volunteers get to call it.
Molly, I have a question. I'd like to respond, please.
Go ahead.
I just, I just want to know for the chaperones, Mr. Brody, do they live in New Hampshire? So what's the, what's the difference?
I don't know all the chaperones who are doing it. I'm not sure if you all know, but.
But you said, you said that they're not going to willing to do it.
The ones who talk to me are local folks that actually live within the supervised reunion. And I won't go into it beyond that because I don't think it's my business to.
No, Jack, I was asking Mr. Brody, not, not you.
I, I don't know all the chaperones, but I believe most live within others. I will find out for you that, that answer, but I don't have that right at this moment.
But I, you understand what I'm trying to do. I don't under, we're, we're, look, we're, I can't believe we broke out a, a thing of footloose here. You know, it's just, we're talking about dancing and it's, it's, we're, we're being very insular and myopic. And, and when you made this decision, it might not be a board policy, it might be your policy. But I don't think you, you looked at the whole scope of thing. And that's my fear that that's what we're doing as a school. It's like, this is my, it's the same, I don't want to turn it to the same regime that it was. So we have a great opportunity here.
I care, I can respond to that, Jason. I care 100% about our kids and their welfare, their welfare. I have no obligation to kids who aren't here. I am a human being. I do read as much as I can read and I, I try and make informed decisions. But at this time, I believe for our kids' mental health, et cetera, and because it's a small amount of kids that I really think that, and, and again, based on, on faculty as well that have chimed in who are volunteering their time to do this. I think that, again, no decision is ever 100% true. But I think the decision that BFUHS kids are only at this dance for now, at this time, within the pandemic, the end of the pandemic, whatever you want to call it, is the right thing to do for our kids.
I respectfully disagree. And I, I think that's, you know, you can say, you can, you're, what you just said is you only care about our kids.
I care, I care about our kids.
Correct. So that's, that's, that's very myopic of you.
Ian, spread a little, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think it's amazing that the school's going to have a dance at all. I think the kids are extremely fortunate in the current situation with the COVID, the way this, we're not clearly at the end of the pandemic. It's very much the middle at this point as we're getting case counts that are higher than we've seen the entire time COVID's been around in Vermont. So, you know, my sense is that if these kids who want to go to a dance with their partner from a different school, then they can go to the one that their school, that their, you know, girlfriend or boyfriend's school throws. My guess is that they're not going to have a dance. And that we're fortunate to be taking this opportunity and making it happen for our students. And I'd say it's, it's a risk as, as it is. And then finally, if possible, I'd like to just call the question.
So that's twice it's been called and I'm going to call a question, but I'm going to let Whitney speak first.
Can we hear from Whitney?
Yeah, if you let me finish, that's what I was trying to do. I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from Whitney and then we're calling the question.
My two cents. In the school system, we have, it's a very controlled system. You know, we know, we have seating charts. We know who is where. We know where our close contacts are. We have electronic passes to know who is in what rest, what restroom and when. We know who's in the library. It's a very controlled environment. And this past week, we just started our screening, testing, which went very well overall. I think we were all very surprised how well it went. And so, I mean, this, our, our little school community, we have control over this to some degree. And, I mean, just look 10 miles north. They're blowing up. You know, and, and like I said, there's nothing more than I want for my own children, let alone our, our entire school community and everybody around this country, around the world, just to get back to normal. Anybody who says that they have not suffered some sort of, you know, depression or some sort of, you know, mental anxiety over what's going on in this over the last two years, they're nuts. And I really want our kids to get back to some sense of normal. But as, as Ian pointed out, we are, we're, we are definitely not out of the woods yet. And I just, I, I want to just creep back into normal slowly. Take it slow. I want to take baby steps. These are our kids. We know our, our kids in our community. We, you know, we know what's going on at the community level. Even, you know, a half a mile to the side of us over in Walpole. We, you know, I, I don't know exactly what's going on over there. And, and with these kids, you know, I don't know who these, these people are. They can, they can present. I mean, there's a thing on the internet now, guys, you can get fake COVID cards. Like this is ridiculous. This is the, this is the point of insanity that we're living in right now. We, we know our kids. We, we know some of their vaccination status and, you know, we've been following the rules and I am busting my butt to keep our kids as safe as we can. And I feel like, again, this is just, I don't know why we're fighting this so hard. Like we are, we are so lucky to be able to be doing something to get back to normal. And, you know, everybody keeps talking about the football games. You know, when, when kids are, and, and community members are watching a football game, they're mostly sitting on their own side around people that they know. They're staying in their cohorts. They, you know, they know who's vaccinated and who's not. They're, it's a controlled environment to some degree and this is just opening up the floodgates. And my question to you is, again, after, you know, X number of hours of overtime, who's going to do the contact tracing when this blows up in our face, you know, for, you know? And I'm not saying I don't want people to have their dates here. I mean, I can't imagine being a high school student and not having my date here. That would stink. But, I mean, we got, we got to understand, guys, that this is, this is, again, something else that we really have to control. Baby steps. That's my two cents. Baby steps. Our, our, our students only. That, that would be my, my recommendation.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to allow Bellas Falls students to invite non-Bellas Falls students to the dance this Saturday as long as they can bring their COVID vaccination card. I'm a roll call.
Can we amend that? Can we amend that?
Sure.
I would say, how about if we amended it with the staff finding out how many would be involved if it were, if it were limited enough for them to feel comfortable doing it? And that way it's leaving it more up to them.
Point of order. They don't, go ahead, Deb.
Point of order, this question was called. It's a little bit late to be asking for another amendment on top of an amendment. We haven't even voted on that amendment.
Well, actually, if she's going to end it, a point of order, she has to call to see whether we agree to end it and that hasn't been done. So I do have time to amend it.
There's an amendment on the floor. You can't amend an amendment that hasn't been voted on.
Two levels. And it's actually incorporated.
there is an amendment on the floor. And so I felt that was, I felt that was the motion. But if we need to vote on the amendment first, if that's how you guys think of doing it, then we'll do that.
I'm going to ask,
Do you accept that as a thing?
And that is the query, the maker of the original motion as to whether he did accept that as a friendly amendment or not.
Which one, Priscilla's?
Thank you. No.
David's.
David's.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
I thought you did, but I just, okay, so we have a motion on the floor that is allowing Bellas Falls students to invite students from another school to the dance this Saturday as long as they can produce a COVID vaccination card.
And I amended it to add, if the administration determines that the number is limited enough so that they are comfortable with allowing them to attend.
But we've called the question twice.
But you didn't vote, call it.
If anybody tells me, we can.
Who accepts her, who has to accept our amendment?
You don't have to accept it if they don't want to.
Yeah, okay. The way this would have to work is the, first we would have to clear, we have to clear Deb's motion to move the question, which we've not done. So we have to poll the board if we want to move the question. So you got to do that. If the, if Deb's motion fails, then Priscilla's motion can be brought up. I would caution Priscilla that the, that the, that the principal has already said he's not comfortable with adding, you know, of making that kind of determination. He basically already made it. But you can certainly bring it back up. But first we have to have a yes or no, are we moving the question? And if that fails, then we can bring up Priscilla's. If Deb's motion passes, then we move to the motion per the friendly amendment. It was a friendly amendment, right? So it's basically Jason's motion as amended. So there you go. So, so first, shall the, shall we move the motion? It's privileged. So we have to vote to move the question. Molly. Does that help?
Point of order, except, Jack, we voted against moving the question, so.
Well, we actually never did. That's the thing. And, and that's why we have to formally do so. Molly has not called the roll on that point, so she needs to do that and then we can move from there. Molly, you want to call the roll for us until we can kind of clear all this mess up?
Yep, I lost you there for a minute. My wifi went nuts. All right.
Okay, so you're going to, you have to roll call, calling the question.
Here we go. Deb.
Okay, do I, that means do I want to call the question or not? Does that, yes or no? Yes. Yes, this is ridiculous.
Jack.
Yes.
Ian. David. Priscilla. Brenda.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Margot.
Yes.
Okay. Question is called. We have a motion on the floor that is to allow any Bellas Falls student to the dance to, to be, as long as they can supply a,
physical proof of vaccination.
Here we go. Deb, get your name.
Did you get that, Molly?
Yeah, she's frozen right now.
I think you're right, yeah.
Molly, if you can hear us, if you turn off your video, that might help. Oh, no. Do we have an assistant?
An assistant.
No, I'm just trying to think who can. Deb, are you the co-chair or the?
I don't think so.
I'm assistant.
Priscilla is? Okay.
All right. Go ahead. David?
I vote yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Who else here?
I'm back again. Sorry.
All right. Jason, Jason, David, Brenda have all voted yes.
Jason is yes. Brenda is yes. David is yes. And who else?
Those were the three yes. We had one no, Deb. Jack, I don't know. Jack may have voted.
Jack has not voted. Margot has not voted. You have not voted, Madam Chair. And that's kind of where I think we're at.
Ian has not voted.
Are you with us, Molly?
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Okay, Jack?
Reluctantly, no. I changed my mind based on the on on what I've heard from the of the folks who had chapped around this.
Okay, Jack.
Margot?
Margot?
I am voting no, based on administration decision, and as well as the fact that I feel like it's not within our purview to be voting.
So we we lost Molly again?
I I think I'm on. Hold on.
For the record, Molly is on.
Molly, how do you vote?
Just trying to figure out. She's the phone and her iPad. She's trying to figure that out.
No.
Okay. And I voted yes. It's five to four. The motion failed. The motion failed. Okay.
I made it through almost a whole meeting before all that nonsense happened.
Okay, Molly, the motion failed. So if you want to go back being in charge.
Thank you for covering for me. The only other thing we have under new business is, and it doesn't have to be taken care of tonight, but we need a WNESU board member. I've kind of been a floater in that, and I guess I don't mind being a member. I get a little nervous that I'm spreading myself too thin, but I'll do it until I tell you I can't do it anymore, unless somebody else wants it.
Thank you.
Is there another member that is just itching to be on that board?
Molly, this is Jack Far. I think that it's really important to have all the board chairs be on it. I think it really helps the process. So I'm thanking you for taking it on, if you don't mind.
Okay. All right, we're going to items for the next agenda. All you got to do is email them to me. I don't have a calendar in front of me to tell you when our next board meeting is. We'll send out an email. Now, I mean, we don't need an executive session that I'm aware of, so we're going to go to director's comments. And I'm going to start with Deb Ray.
Okay, didn't think I had anything to say, but at the moment, I just have one minute of conversation or less, which is this kind of micromanaging is what the board's problems are, and which cause additional angst with everyone else in administration. And lastly, why people don't run for these seats. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Jack?
Basically, just to reiterate two things. One, we really must talk about budget in our next meeting. And two, yes, I think it's really important for us to, A, stay in our lane, and remember that we guide we guide policy and overall supervision, but we are not the experts. We are not the administration, and we need to be humble about what we know, what we don't know, and what we should be involved with, and what we should not.
Thank you. And I apologize for not. I got flustered, I guess, with that last motion, and I forgot to even ask you about the budget. But we'll put it on next time. Ian, you're up.
Just want to second what Deb and Jack have said about not micromanaging this administration. Thanks.
David?
Well, Deb, I certainly don't know what I don't know. But what I do know is we now have a situation where we will reject the possible attendance of students who can demonstrate that they've been vaccinated in favor of what I would refer to as Bellas Falls exceptionalism, where we will be perfectly happy to allow in Bellas Falls students who, in fact, may not be vaccinated. I think that when you view it strictly from a public safety standpoint, that that is a not a wise approach to take to prom. But it's the approach that's been taken. And I certainly support the majority in supporting their administration on it. However, I also happen to believe that policies, whatever the board damn well sets policy is, and I can't think of a more important local issue in this community than how we're going to pull off a prom.
Brenda?
Yeah, we've experienced a pandemic. We can't agree where it came from or how to mitigate it. It seems like one size doesn't fit all when it comes to human beings and clothing fashion, or medical diagnosis, medications, and side effects. But somehow, we think that herd mitigation is this is better than herd immunity. I mean, we have so much conflict. And yet, we think we can control things that we can't even control. And even in our control, we're scared. Or we're expecting something bad to happen. But I don't know how the control has been working for us. The mask obviously doesn't work, or it wouldn't be an issue or discretion. The vaccine obviously hasn't been working. And now there's other things that are coming to us that will have to be put in place. So I don't know, it's just it's just interesting to me. Seems like we're all conflicted in this situation. But I am so very glad that the students are getting against. And we're back to.
Jason?
Thanks, Molly. Yeah, I think, listen, I don't want to micromanage anybody either. These people make a lot of money. But from time to time, they make bad decisions, and they drag their feet. You know, it's been a year we've been dragging our feet on the HVAC, and we're finally going to get something going, you know. So so they do need help. There's no doubt they need help. So you can call it micromanaging, call it whatever you want. But I can't believe we won't let kids go to a dance, even if they're vaccinated. I mean, that is the cure-all, right? That's what everyone says, vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. And we're not going to let those kids go. We want, you know, Mr. We want we want masking forever, it seems like, no matter what the percentages are. And we never even tried to take off the mask after 10 days. That was what we decided. So no matter what we decide, it sounds like they're going to do whatever the hell they want anyway. So at what point are we actually in charge? Thank you.
Margot?
I wanted to just extend my appreciation for our school nurse presenting this evening and offering some thoughts about some other things that the schools might consider in order to help alleviate some of the added burdens that are on our nursing staff. And I don't know, you know, at what level some of those considerations might be appropriate. But I would, you know, highly encourage the staff, the administration, to think about ways that we might help share the burden in some of the work that's having to be done in the schools. I don't know if there's good solutions, but maybe putting brains together would help. That's it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna I'm gonna take a line from David Clark. And David Clark and I, sometimes we agree to disagree.
Molly, did you want to go first, or did you want me to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I missed you. Go ahead, Priscilla.
That's okay. And that's why if you wanted me to, it was okay. That's why I was just making sure. Okay, I wasn't I don't look at it as micromanaging when a parent comes to the board and asks for consideration for, you know, something that they feel that they disagree with the school for. That's not micromanaging. Micromanaging would be if we decided ahead of time and made the decision. So I would encourage the administration and the teachers at the school to look at the possibility of maybe these vaccinated kids being allowed in, since it's outside, and it is similar from that standpoint. But I do also respect the ideas that it may increase the possibility of contact tracing. Although if this student is vaccinated, the definition is that if they are vaccinated, they are not considered a close contact. That's by our our state guidelines at this point. So that might be a consideration for the staff to look at. I wanted to get a shout out to all of our teams. We heard one going by, having having won tonight. I know the football team was supposed to be facing a really tough match last last weekend, and they won 56 to 0. So if we can keep that up, we're looking at a really fantastic team there for the rest of the season. I was able to also attend a field hockey game this this week. Wonderful, after, you know, being able to see some of these. And they won, the varsity was 15 to 0, and I think the JV was 5 to 0, maybe. Anyway, they did a fantastic job, both teams. I'm looking forward to looking, maybe visiting some of the other games that are here at home and seeing some of the other teams play. Looking for a head to improving in this COVID situation. I know there are a lot of scared people out there. There are also people that are, like Whitney pointed out, avoiding wearing masks at this point. People come in to get shots at the local pharmacy and don't wear their masks who have never had shots. So I know there are people not wearing masks that have are not vaccinated. So it is scary for a lot of us, as we sit here, being vaccinated and worrying about it. And those parents are out there worrying, but they are also, like Whitney said, wanting to get back to normal so desperately that, you know, some of this stuff has to go by the wayside. And luckily, people that are vaccinated, for the most part, are not getting sick enough to end up in the hospital. So encouraging those vaccinations is important. Looking at the new grants that are out there, impossible for the percentages being really high for our students to be vaccinated. Please look into that. And maybe we can qualify for some of those grants so that we have money to let the students plan maybe another dance down the road when the when the things can be relaxed a little bit, and some other activities. Thank you. Be kind to each other.
Thank you. So I started to say I David Clark, a lot of times, especially when I was first on the boards, that one of the one of the things he I don't know if he knew he taught me, but he kind of taught me was he he would always kind of veer towards what the administration suggested. And that, I think, on items like this, that's why I feel. Yeah, I get it. I had a I had. System. And if, you know, if this was going on, I'm sure there would have been some very non-understanding nights at home. But I, you know, I just sometimes it's just not a it's just not a place for the board to to stick their hands in. And I did my homework a little bit today because I had a little extra time because I'm on vacation. So, you know, I was able to kind of wrap my head around what really should we be doing, which made me feel a little more at ease tonight to know that we were doing what was right. And I totally agree. I hope this can get a control and and then we can move on, and these kids can start really enjoying things. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Sorry, my Wi-Fi was a little funky. And I'll see some of you on Thursday. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.